I call the meeting to order. Let me continue. Okay. Have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I would make a motion to adopt the agenda of March 11th.
Okay.
All in favor?
Is everyone in favor or anyone against? Okay, motion approved in minutes, so we see 26, 24.
I can approve it.
Second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Uh, any.
Alright, I will entertain a motion to for uh, election of Chair of the Suck Board.
I nominate Jeff Key.
Any seconds? Any, uh, is all in favor?
Hmm.
Okay, I'll let you take over, Jeff.
Okay, um, nomination, thank you, you guys will continue rolling. And I'll hand down to, uh, do your promotion to nominate Vice Chair of the Suck Board. I would nominate Cheryl Poirier.
Second.
You can do that?
Yeah.
All in favor?
All, any, any other nominations? For Vice Chair? All in favor?
None.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Appointment to Development Review Board, Planning Commission Assessor, and other appointed offices.
Okay, so do you want to start with the assessor?
Start with the assessor.
Um, Mary Jo Teeter is currently the assessor.
Do we hear a motion to appoint Mary Jo Teeter as the assessor?
I'll make the motion to appoint Mary Jo Teeter for assessor.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor?
None.
Motion carried.
Alright, Constable Dale Kerber.
Do you hear a motion to appoint Dale Kerber? For Constable?
Do you have any other choices, Paul?
I don't have any choices now.
Right.
We don't live in town, so. You have a military police background, don't you?
Security forces.
That's not it.
I'll nominate Dale Kerber as a law.
Is that the spot?
I would second that. Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
So we have the two-year appointments for the DRB, which are currently Mark Teeter, Jamie Lee, Benjamin Thirdfield, Margaret Mugg, and Jonathan Andrews.
Do you hear a motion to appoint?
I'll do it in a second.
I think we do all once.
All at once, do I hear a motion to appoint the names that were just mentioned? For the DRB?
I'll make them.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
We have the dog warden, which is currently me.
Do you have anybody, is there anybody else that would?
Currently none.
Okay. I'm pretty sorry.
Did he got it correctly?
I tried.
Alright, for, for the time being, do you hear an appointment for Paul Donaldson as dog catcher?
Oh my God. For the time being.
For the time being?
I would second that.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, fire warden, Kurt Nateborne. He can still do it.
He can still do it?
He can still do it.
But he moved.
He's gonna be moving to West Rutland, he's still here.
What happens if he moves to West Rutland?
He says he can still do it, I don't, I looked at the statue, it doesn't look like he has to live in full name.
They want to go through?
Does.
Okay, what?
Is it?
Well, you gotta, we have to appoint, we have to appoint, do you hear a motion to appoint Nate and Smire?
Yes, I would put, we're appoint Nateborne as a public.
Person, Lord, pray your word. Do you hear a second? Any comments or questions? All in favor?
None.
Motion carried.
We have Fourth of July Director Sarah Pelkey.
Oh wait, Sarah Pelkey, not fourth.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Yay.
Any opposed?
We have the Planning Commission, which is Jamie Lee, Mark Teeter, Jonathan Andrews, Doug Langdon, and Mary Sue Reed.
Okay, do you hear a motion to appoint, uh, Planning Commission, with the names that we, that were just mentioned?
I have a second.
Well, I think you shouldn't second it, if you're on the board.
You're on the board. Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed?
Hey, Recreation Director Cheryl Poirier.
Who's still need, need one of them?
We do.
I would nominate Cheryl.
Do you hear a second, a second? Any questions, comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, Recreation Commission, currently is Sarah Pelkey.
Point Sarah?
Mm-hmm. Point Sarah. She might have turned stuff, no, I would second.
All in favor? Motion carried.
We have the Rutland Regional Planning Commission and the Rutland Regional Transportation Council, which is Sarah and myself as the alternative. Who wants to do both of those?
I'll nominate Sarah for both of those.
And me as the alternative, okay.
A second, any comments or questions? All in favor? Any, any opposed? Motion carried.
We got, um, we can do a bunch of them together here. Rutland County Solid Waste District Rep, which is me, Town Energy Coordinator, Tax Collector, Town Service Officer, Criminal Health Officer, Zoning Administrator, Emergency Management. The Raptor.
That's you, as, as, right. Do you hear, do I hear an appointment for Paul, for, all of the, uh?
Who says yes?
I said I'll make the appointment.
It's not that hard, just say yes or no.
Yes. Don't be yelling at me, yes.
All in favor? Alright.
I'm not sure, no.
Uh, Tree Warden Stevens Handfield.
Make a motion for Stevens Handfield, Tree Warden.
I would second that. All in favor?
Order Creek Communications Union Director Mark Teeter.
Alright, you nominate Mark, do you hear a second? All in favor?
Emergency Management Coordinator Erin Kerber.
Yeah, Erin, was it?
I'll nominate Erin Kerber.
Second? All in favor, Cheryl Lee Smith. Motion carried.
Um, Jamie Lee as the moderator, came up about two and a half votes short. Right in votes. But do we wanna, I've already talked to her, she's willing to do it again. Do you want to take care of the appointment, Paul?
Yes, let's take care of it now.
Okay.
Second? All in favor?
None.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Well, I don't know how long the DMH Rail Trail Council, do you know how long that?
There's no issue.
I mean, is there a, a term to the appointment?
I don't believe it.
Okay.
But let's, let's do.
Should we just, since our reorganiz- organizing, should we just reappoint who we have in here now?
I think that probably makes sense.
I think we should probably do that.
So it's Philip, um,
Philip what?
Burger, Burger.
Not, not Burger.
Burger, Burger, I think.
Do you hear a motion for Philip?
Yes, I would make a motion for Philip for the DMH Rail Council.
Do you hear a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, haven't done those. Adoption of notice posting policy, publishing the newspaper. Um, I post the, uh, notices on, online here. The message board out here by the Burger Place, library, and the post office. And I publish in the Lake Region Free Press or the Rutland Herald. Do you want to make a motion for?
A motion for adoption of notice posting policy?
Hmm, so outside, yeah?
In the office here, outside by the Burger Place. Online, in the library, in the post office. Yeah, for physical one.
Do we need post office maybe?
Post office.
Or near the post office.
Yeah.
I'll nominate Paul. Continue.
You nominate, no, nomination posting.
Oh, posting.
Okay.
It is Paul.
And publishing in the, in the Lake Region Free Press or the Rutland Herald.
Yes.
Second, any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Now, how about the fence viewer?
About?
Fence viewer.
That's an antiquated old thing that's been in there.
It's listed.
Yes, so is lumber inspector.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, go ahead.
We made a motion to take it out for Nix, huh? Do you know what the fence viewer is?
I would like to nominate Jonathan Andrews for the fence.
Does he know what the fence viewer is? What it has to do with farming?
I know, I think, I mean, it's English, so I imagine it has something to do with hearing fences, but that's. We do have fences, more fences going up in town.
It's not, it's not that type of fence viewer.
No? It's not a fence. It's, I mean, why I understand that the fence viewer was, if, if farmers got into dispute where the fence was, or the fence came down, and someone's cows got into someone else's property, they would, they would moderate the disputes between.
Hasn't been anything on that line in quite some time.
Quite some time. So, that's how I understand it anyways.
Yeah.
Mark likes to have fun at least.
Can we take it out?
I would probably take, I would probably take that strike back from the town board.
Alright, Jonathan.
So no seconding marks?
No, no second?
Oh, you want, are we still?
Yeah, we're still.
He made a motion.
Mark made a motion. To nominate Jonathan as fence viewer?
Yeah.
I don't think it's a thing, so I kind of hope that I think it's, and then there, it's not used, it's not exactly what it's supposed to be for.
If we have the fences down by the lake, yeah.
So it seems like you're a little hidden thing in there, Paul.
Do you hear a second on the nomination? With no, no second?
Do you want to move that forward?
Then the, the, the motion is dropped?
Maybe you could come back with a description of what that is, so we all understand it better, because that's not how I understand it. Not about regular fences like Lake. Maybe.
Question on the floor has been dropped? Because there's been no second. Now, if this is something like this, let's find out, let's get to the root of it and find out. I would need exactly what the fence viewer is supposed to do. And if we need to change the policy, then we'll change the policy. But that's something that we found in the town report, let's look at it, I mean, may come back to it.
That's scary.
Okay?
Alright.
Anything else on appointment?
No.
On our agenda, we had Public Comments and Concerns number seven. It actually should be down on number thirteen. Do I hear?
Yeah, it's in, it's there twice, I have.
It's in twice. Promotion to move public comments and concerns from number seven on the agenda down to number thirteen. Do you hear a motion?
Make a motion to change it from seven to thirteen.
Do you hear a second? Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Motion carried. Go to the board.
Uh, can I pick up the, the news from last time? Um, I got one of the two quotes came back to me today. For crack sealing for Thrall Road, which is 1.3 miles and nine tenths of a mile of Route 140, which would be from the Morse Hollow Bridge on 140, just outside Morse Hollow, uh, east to the Middletown border. Uh, they said approximately two eight-hour days with a six-man crew, and $6,000 for an eight-hour day, so for both of those in two days, we're looking at like 12 grand. I still haven't got the other estimate in from the other company that I just like visit with, and I did try to get a third estimate, but I can't get an answer back, and you would think that if you're gonna hand over money, then no, they should be chasing after us instead of.
I was judging after them.
Yeah.
It's actually a pretty decent price for that.
Yeah, I, I, I truly have no clue, I've never done anything with it before, so.
And how many miles?
That's why I wanted to get at least three different, definitely get.
How many miles?
A total of 2.2.
2.2 miles.
Is it guaranteed, once they take care of it, then it's gonna, you know?
You, you know, I'm really not sure, to be honest with you.
It slows it down.
So it's still gonna come back.
I mean, people do it, a lot of people do it.
Just keeps a lot of them making a worse.
Yeah, they're, they would. They would blow out the cracks. Uh, guys would go ahead, they'd blow out the cracks, and then they're gonna fill it with that, I don't know, hot liquid rubber or whatever.
So it expands.
Right, but it also, it stops the moisture from getting down in and, and popping.
Right, it does slow it down. It doesn't cure the problem.
No, but it will slow it down substantially.
Yeah, I, I, just to give you my opinion of, for what it's worth, I think, I think we should get the other estimate, see how they compare. And I, I feel like we should move forward with one or the other, because the cost of asphalt and how new that road is, I, you know, I think we need to stay up on maintenance and stuff, and this is.
Be proactive on our highways.
Yeah. Um, so that's it for that part. Uh, the CPR that I was trying to get together for the town employees and whatnot, um, it's tentatively April. It would be tentatively sometime in April during a, a weekday. She couldn't set anything in stone, because she is working on her, her cert- certificate. Something to do with her certificate, so once she gets that under control, she's gonna call me back and offer a couple of, um, you know, a backup plan on a.
Don't make it the eighth.
Don't make it the eighth?
Big clips day.
Big clips day.
Big clips day. Big doings.
Okay, I won't make it the eighth, not the eighth. Alright. Um.
I'd like that, maybe see if clips day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think glasses, yeah.
Early last week, we discovered a culvert failure on Endless Brook Road and Lewis Road, they're both galvanized culverts. Uh, the bottoms completely gone, actually, I think one of them is plastic, the Lewis Road one, I believe is plastic. Regardless of the material, the culverts are shot. Uh, they're undermined, the, the water's going underneath the culverts, and it's carrying the road material out, so it's, the road material is now dropping down from the top of it, and so, and so we're gonna have to do those as soon as we can get our heavy-weighted equipment on the roads without causing more destruction than hope, so we're just keeping a very close eye on those for the time being. We.
Do we have those culverts in stock, and we had a bunch of them, right?
Yeah, we have a ton of.
What size are they?
Ones are 24, and I really would like to put 30 in there, because it gets a good water flow, I actually thought it was a perennial stream, but after talking to the Agency of Natural Resources, they think it's an intermittent, which doesn't hurt my feelings, because if it was theirs, they'd probably want like a 48.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, I feel that a 30 should be sufficient, if it's something worse than that, then we're gonna have bigger problems anyway, so.
So that, we have a 30 in stock, what's the other one?
Yeah, the other one's just gonna be an 18, I believe it's a 15 now. But 15-inch drainage culverts, which, a drainage culvert goes across the road, um, ha- it has to be an 18, that's the, that's the minimum, uh, diameter.
How often do you have to go and unplug those smaller culverts? Or do they?
They seem to fail more than actually unplugging them, other than areas like Fern Cliff Road. Um, yeah.
I'm just wondering, you know, if an 18's big, is, is big enough?
Yeah.
Because if we have to, you know, if, if it's a drainage, you get all those leaves and everything else.
It is a drainage, but just a little ways down the road, there's another culvert too, so if that one does fail, or if, you know, if this thing completely collapses or something, we can kinda, we could guide the water to other ones temporarily, but I don't feel it would be. If, you know, the price difference as, as you go from 18 at 24 or whatever, starts to get a little bit more.
A little bit more.
Yeah, so I, I, you know, I feel confident in putting an 18 in there, we're already upsizing from what it currently had, so.
Yeah, you're three inches in diameter or more.
Yeah.
That's so much of money as it would be, you know, the way it would work and how long it would.
Yeah, well, and the culverts, you know, like, so we're put, we're replacing all these failed galvanized culverts from, I don't know when, because I can't even see that on the, on the app, um, you know, the actual original date of install, but they're all, they're all rusting out and undermining. And, you know, it seems kinda like, I, I just sent this to, to the A and R guy last week, he said it seems like all of them are failing in at once, like, they're all starting to kinda come apart, and it's like, well, if, you know, if they didn't have anything before those, they probably got a bunch of those galvanized culverts and went through and installed them around the same timeframe, so that would make sense as to why you have multiple culverts.
Look on the bright side, you replace them all at once, and you don't have to worry about it for long.
Yeah, I guess so, I guess so, so, um, those, those spots are marked, they're marked with, with road cones, so that you can't drive into a hole or anything. Uh, it's not, we're trying to be negligent or lazy or anything, it's just, I, I truly feel that we're gonna do more destruction than we are good if we start trying to do that right now, so that leads me, I'll, I'll go right into the next thing. Uh, we, we probably haven't been seen by many people out on the backroads with our equipment or big trucks. If we go five miles out a gravel road to fix one spot, it's, it's ugly but still passable, we could do a lot more destruction in the first five miles to get to that spot. Uh, so, we're, we're basically waiting until we get a spot that's either impassable, or we can really get over the roads without tearing them up before we, you know.
What season?
I realize I've been around all of the roads multiple times in the last two weeks, and they all need a serious facelift, whether it's potholes or mud ruts or whatever, but I promise they're, they're all passable right now, we won't leave them impassable. Um, we did fix one spot at the top of Griffin Hill last week, we just put some stone in it, kinda, kinda worked to, um, coordinated with Castleton a little bit, and they, they made their section that we had to go over a little bit better, so we wouldn't have to trek in all the way from Lewis to go downtown and whatnot. But it, but that's the only one we've truly had to do anything to make it, you know, passable for emergency services or a fuel truck, or, you know, somebody in anything less than a four-wheel-drive SUV or truck, so. So anyways, we're keeping a close eye on the backroads. Um, and, and that's a reason for not being on them with, with the bigger equipment right now. Um, and that being said, we are doing as much as we can with asphalt roads currently, and just constantly monitoring gravel roads.
How long are you gonna wait if you don't get another quote? Or sealing, crack sealing?
So I already had, this is, this is one of two companies that have come out and done a visual inspection that I've met with, uh, out in those two locations. Uh, and there's one other company, which is the one that I mentioned, which does, from what I'm told, uh, it's Nikon, I, apparently they do a lot of the work for like D-Trans and, and stuff. I don't know if they heard town of, and they were just like, well, we gotta stay contract, I, I don't know what the, you know, I don't know what the deal is there, but I, I have made a couple of phone calls and a couple of voicemails, and I still haven't got anything back. I, I really feel like we should get at least two different estimates, but, um, I've, I called the other company that I don't have an estimate yet from, and gave them a, a heads up on last Fri- Thursday or Friday, but I was still awaiting
Oh, okay.
to present you with an estimate.
They can't do anything to the frost anyways, can they?
Not usually, it's gotta be above a certain degree too.
Yeah.
I think it's gotta be above 50 degrees, ground has to be above 30 degrees. Unsteadily.
We did take the, the York rakes out today, and that was how we managed the snow on, on Morse Hollow, because it's a higher elevation, so it was actually a couple inches of snow. And it was, um, it was a trial and error thing, I don't think it had been done before to my knowledge, but it definitely made an improvement.
Really?
Really, yes, it, it actually pulls the snow off, and, and you're able to do it with a lightweight vehicle, so you're not adding mud ruts at the same time, and you're kind of leveling out some of the mud ruts, so. Yeah, just trying to think of things that, you know, some unorthodox methods that aren't gonna cost a ridiculous amount of money or throwing material or whatever, so. Anyways, we did that there, we did it with Fennel Hampshire and Pond Hill yesterday, and, uh, so maybe some of those spots, spots will smooth out a little bit. Um, the other thing is, uh, Fern Cliff, down by the tennis courts, towards the south end of Fern Cliff Road. Just had a couple trouble culverts that, uh, we flushed out a couple times, and then Polley Fire has helped us even flush out, and within less than six months, they go right back to being completely clogged. So, and it, a lot of it is leaves and, um, material coming down from Ivy Lane, because they don't have a stone line to ditch, but it's a private road, so it's out of our.
Out of your reach.
Um, so I'm just kinda working on coming up with a solution for that. Uh, there's so much water on Fern Cliff Road, pretty much all winter, this winter especially, that I've noticed. And the, the salt consumption on that road is just, we're gonna have sharks in St. Catherine in one of five years at this rate, but, uh, yeah. So I, I'm, I'm trying to work on that as well.
Did you spread the salt today?
I did, yeah, it's pretty icy. Yeah. I went down Fern Cliff, or, uh, yeah, I went down 140 first thing. But it, uh, so each polley in 140, and the first, first road we did, because it's all vibrating in turns. I just can't stick lane, I was going very slowly, but I almost still went across the intersection into the, into the sign, it was, it was pretty slick in some spots, so.
Did we have a flood later?
That's all.
We had a flood like that?
Yeah, we did not.
There was no, no phone call or anything.
Well, we got four inches.
Um, other than that, it's basically kind of a wrap, we did, we did put, uh, putting out an axiary and some brushing, we're moving Ruby Road last week as well, so we're trying to do some brush cutting while we are kinda limited to what we can do on gravel roads.
Decreased to here.
Good.
That's it for me, any questions, Congressman?
What is your first big project that you're gonna do when we can start up?
We are going to, well, we're gonna take care of the failed culverts first, once we can get out there.
Those two failed culvert?
Yeah, get the roads, the potholes somewhat under control, and then as far as actual projects go, um, we're gonna have to tie up some of our MRGP work that's left over from last year.
Okay.
Uh, my intention is, was to, to really get some much-needed work done on Lewis Road this year. Um, but I've, like I mentioned before about Upper Road last meeting, um, I've kind of been talking with those quarries up through there too.
So I was wondering if you're gonna start on the Upper Road first, or?
Once, I'll give you more information once I get a solid, uh, discussion going with the, the owners of QSI and, um, remote structural, I can actually tell you something solid, I don't wanna just.
So where, where, where is that section, because I do have it twice.
Upper Road?
Yeah, what, what section? I didn't.
I didn't notice anything.
Wherever the road is alligator-backed and you're driving and then it just kinda dips down. Or you feel your vehicle just do a sudden dive off to the right. Yeah, if, if you look at that, like I said, if you were to shoot that with a transit and see the low point versus the rest of the road height. I'm not sure what it is, but it's.
It's been like that quite a while.
Well, it has, but hence my reasoning for wanting to actually do a proper fix on it, instead of just throw asphalt on it and. You know, throw away a hundred plus thousand dollars and have it go back to that and.
Fix it right.
Wrong, yeah. Like, it should be coming around soon, so I will certainly go out and we'll discuss some options. Come up with the best solution we can for a good fix on it.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Anybody have any questions for Joel? Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, community development?
Um, Sarah couldn't make the meeting, she wanted me to report that she is working on the, uh, RFP for the. Um, merger study. That's all I have for Sarah.
Okay. Now managers report?
So I've got, uh, Betsy Westcott gave me a. Clicker license application for today, or excuse me, today she gave it to me. For Appalachian Gap Distillery, they're having a tasting, uh, Maple, the day of Maple Fest. At the original Vermont store, from eleven AM to five PM. And she's got all the information here, the insurances, et cetera.
So the, the Vermont store want to do it?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I heard that there's gonna be a party in back, back of Vermont.
I've been told, I've been told that party, that gathering is a non-alcoholic party.
Just like a big fire pit in there.
They're advertising it as a family-friendly event.
Must be a problem with that at all, it's like you're gonna have a big fire pit, you know, it's.
This is in front of the original Vermont store.
Wow, that sounds, actually sounds pretty interesting.
Appalachian Gap Distillery.
For the one day.
Yeah.
Are you a second?
Sure, I would second.
Any economists or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Or can carry?
We have every year, uh, in connection with our. Class two paving grant applications and our, uh, structures. Um, grant applications, we have to file this annual financial plan with the, with, um. So we have to, and we also have to do a certificate of compliance for the town road and bridge standards. Oh, if someone wants to make a motion for those, for your motion?
Make a motion for.
Any economists or questions by the board?
You looking for seconds?
Uh, Cheryl's second.
So if you definitely want to sign that.
All in favor? Any opposed? Or can carry?
Mary, you know, Peter, uh, was gonna try to make tonight's meeting, but was unable to. She mentioned to me that we should probably start looking forward to, um, a townwide reappraisal. Um, she's right now currently projecting that it probably won't, won't start for a couple of years. Is her guess, but she'd like to get the sub-board's permission to put out an RFP for that.
Do you remember the last time we reassessed, do you remember?
Are we below eighty percent?
Right on eighty. I think we're right around there.
Right around the edge, cause usually, last time we didn't do a town appraisal, if I remember right. Until we dropped under eighty percent.
Right, this is projected. It, it's not gonna get there in another year or two.
Cause usually they don't do anything unless you're under eighty percent. You got a question?
Yeah, I thought I was reading that the state was going to take over, um, the reassessments. And this was a couple of months ago, but I don't know.
Wouldn't surprise me.
Well, apparently they do give each town, I think it's, um, it's under ten dollars per parcel. To help, you know, uh, pay for the costs of an assessment. And they were saying that the state was going to take everything over, but again, I haven't heard anything about it. So Mary Jo would probably know better than I would.
Yeah, she, she might, but if she doesn't, we'll keep, we'll have to keep her eyes peeled.
Yeah, this is like completely out of my wheelhouse and.
Yes, out of mine too, but.
What, what is eighty percent?
Well. If, if you're appraised at your town, you know, you, when you get a reappraised, the values of your house, right? The common level of appraisal should be at a hundred percent. And usually you stay at that until, like, say houses go up or the market and it all fluctuates. Your common level of appraisal depreciates, if I'm right. And it comes down to usually between, um, eighty, ninety and eighty-five percent, ninety percent's pretty healthy. And, but you call for a townwide appraisal, but you're starting to get out of whack. With what the fair market value is and your common level of appraisal, if you're under eighty percent. So you, you start that, am I right?
Kinda, yes, it, that's the number that they use, they multiply the assessment by that percentage. And that's what, what your, your new rate is. So, and that's how people.
It can go the other way too.
It can go the other way, it can be. No, that's, that's, that's worse than under eighty.
Right, well, but it, it, you know, the higher the number, the better it is for your tax. That's what it's called, it's fine. So, but it's, it's, it's looking like that it's gonna be another year or so. It'd be, it'd be eighty, so, so this is just, and there's a pretty good backlog. Yeah, in the state, but you have to sort of get in line.
Right, that's what, that's why it projects, you know, a couple of years out.
This is a projected.
Okay, so she's gonna come, you're saying she's, you're giving us a heads up? That she's gonna come in and talk to us, you know, cause I have some questions too, for, that I don't. I can't answer, you know, I need to know.
Okay.
I would think she would know best out of all of us.
Oh, yeah.
I think she should just let her do her thing.
Maybe she would know about the state level, what they're gonna do.
But I wanna know, you know, I don't, I don't understand some of it, I need to understand it.
It compares all the, the, the buying or, or the selling of houses compared to what they were listed for.
Right.
That's how the numbers arrive at.
Oh, she wants us to do an RFP for testing.
Yeah.
People to do it, some to do it actually.
Just to get on the list.
Yeah. When she's asking on school.
Okay, so we'll have to get in here to.
I, I mean, unless someone makes a motion, otherwise.
You guys wanna, I'd like to listen to that, Joel, before we.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
If it's okay, do you guys feel, are you okay with that, Alan?
Yes.
So, you okay, Pete, are you with it? You okay with it?
So I'll ask her to come to our next meeting.
Yeah, if she can. Yeah, cause, cause there'll be people in the audience too that will wanna understand and. It's very important, it's not an easy thing to understand.
Did you guys sign that, that?
No.
I wanna just keep on top of that and. So Jeff, do you wanna sign this? Forget to do that. So, the next item is the Fourth of July discussions. Um, the Fourth of July this year is on a Thursday. Um, and I've communicated with them last week and they've advised that they are booked for the Fourth. But could do fireworks on the Fifth.
So the company we had last year, right?
Someone that, who's been doing it, as far as I know. Or.
I have, yeah, same company since I've been on the board, that's, close to eighteen years. So I don't know.
So Sarah's question was, we want to keep the same company, do a different day, look for a different company and do July Four?
I wanna get back to the Fourth, everybody used to be the best, we would come to Polley. Things to do all day, everyone knew what it is.
So you want me to try to find another company then? But, that's what yours had was like.
How do you feel about that though?
I agree.
Carol?
I can go either way. I mean, we spent a lot of time last year thinking, do we want to do on different days? Everybody said, yes, 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 cause the great people come here for, before the Fourth, and then they have some more to do. So maybe we figured out that wasn't the great way, maybe Sarah has insight that more people said, no, I want it on the same day. That was our big discussion last year, so I, I, it could go either way.
Do you think, I, look for somebody and see if we can get it on the Fourth?
Yeah, what day is, is the Fourth?
Thursday.
Yes.
So let's try and see if we can find a company.
Yeah, you can do the best.
That, that can do it on the Fourth. If not, we're gonna have to go with a company on the Fifth, or on, on the weekend.
Don't do it alone.
So not do it at all, I guess.
No.
Why, why are you groaning like that?
We know, we never know. How often do we, do we know like when gravel does it, when bomb is in, when like, do we get it? We don't really hear about when they have theirs, we just said ours.
Polley always did the Fourth.
I know, for last year, I know. But we didn't do it last year, so maybe someone's thinking, when is what we're doing, I'm just saying we. We could stake it, you have four towns all doing it on the same night.
Well, then you can have your head on a swivel.
Can you see it from your house? Okay, so we've talked about our, our current animal control ordinance. Um, in, I don't know, the last four or five months. Um, cause we've had some more complaints about. I guess my ineffectiveness, I'd say it's the ineffectiveness of the ordinance. Um, I've asked the town attorney to look at our ordinance. And I, there's some, some other towns that I've asked a better copy of their ordinance. Cause I understand there's some around towns that have, uh. They'll put a ten, but a little bit more teeth in their ordinance than ours does.
Okay.
Um.
Ours is just they get warnings a fine, that's, I remember reading it, just they get a first warning and a fine, they get a second warning, a bigger fine, a third warning and a bigger fine, right?
The, the, the main issue that I, that I see our ordinance. Uh, and this is where I want the town attorney to confirm that I'm reading it correctly, which I think I am. Uh, the only, the only time you can do a vicious animal complaint is if. The dog actually bites a person or another domesticated animal.
They have to report it.
Correct, but there's some, there's some, uh. Dogs that are allegedly. Showing aggressive tendencies toward people that haven't bitten them.
I agree.
And, um, so like, for instance, I haven't seen it yet, but I understand like Fairhaven's policy is you get a bite. You get one bite and then after the second bite, the penalty gets more severe. Um. I'm sorry?
It should be more severe. I've been bitten by two dogs and it's not, it's not fun.
Is it a person being bit or another dog being bit? Cause that's two different things that happen, Polley, a dog's.
The way I read our current ordinance is, you can do a vicious animal complaint, i.e. The, the animal control officer comes to the sledboard and says, I have this vicious dog, what do you want us to do about it? And the way I read the ordinance is, it, it only rises to that level after it's bitten a person or another domesticated animal.
We gotta look at our policy, I always look like to be proactive. If we have to wait for a dog to bite and it's actually aggressively coming at a person. Maybe we need to discuss a different part of the policy.
That's a number of dogs too, that's been another issue, is if you have one dog, two dogs, five dogs, seven dogs, and they're all, or.
Yeah, we, we need to look at our policy and, and let's bring that out and start working on it.
And Zonan, we do have a kennel requirement.
Don't have a kennel.
She, she might as well have a kennel.
So it sounds like we need to look at that policy.
It's one in one case, though, we've had more than just.
One person got bit, right?
No.
When, when I was reading the letters. It, it, it Lorenzo was bit.
He was not bit, I've talked to him, I've spoken to Mr. D Lorenzo twice.
Okay, he was not bit.
No, unless he's not been, been forthcoming with me, which I don't think is the case.
I, 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 I haven't talked to him before.
No, the, some of the people that are, uh, complaining characterize these as attacks. Where a dog will come up and be like, they characterize that as an attack. Which I don't think our ordinance looks at it the same way, you know, um, so.
They gotta have a model ordinance, so, you know, something.
Perhaps.
Yeah, we need, we probably just need to, to look, start reviewing some of our ordinances.
But, you know, when, when I'm trying, trying to do what the ordinance allows me to do and it's.
Yeah.
You know, it's not satisfactory to people, I, I, you don't know.
Yeah, how can you, yeah, I understand what you're saying completely.
I do go to their house once a week and three of them come up from the fence and they go nuts.
Three of the seven.
Yeah, that's kind of funny, but no, it's a pretty fixed view.
But it's not just that, there's other cases, that's not the only case we had in town, that's what I'm saying, Paul's, Paul's correct, is we have more issues than just the one. That's the one that's, it's gone, but there are more dog cases in town.
Sure, let's start looking at that ordinance, get some other ones from other towns and. Towns Point, see what the VLTC, because that, they are our insurance company too, and let's look and see what we got. Either it changes or it doesn't.
So I wanted to put it on record, because some people think I'm just sitting here, I don't know, reading the newspaper, I guess.
Mm-hmm, well, you're not, and we know that.
Um.
Look at the ordinance sooner rather than later, so that before I bite someone, I mean, I've been bitten a little bit too, with this delivery. It's frightening, these dogs running out of nowhere, so. I'd like it to be taken care of before I get bit, versus having to get bit.
That's why we, we need to look at, at the ordinances. Jonathan, you have a question?
Fairhaven's listing their fireworks on the sixth.
On the sixth?
Yeah.
That's a Saturday?
They look great.
Okay, all right, Paul?
Yes, sir.
That it?
Um, yeah, for the moment. Um, yeah, for the moment. Yes.
All right. Aaron, what do you got?
A few reports and a few quick updates for the board if I saw them. Overall, the year has started off fairly slow, so we appreciate that. This last weekend or this month so far has been a little bit busier for us, but.
Thanks for coming with the phone link too, that was nice to meet you guys and do that.
As well. Thank you as well as. Um, thank you all, actually, we might have a double, maybe not. Um. Thank you and Mr. Donaldson for all your efforts during budget season, all the way through town meeting. Ensure our funding at a level that is necessary to keep us covered and to be, to be going forward, so thank you all for that.
If people are pretty excited to see the new truck and actually go through it and you guys can stay, hang around and share that, that was nice.
John, who is the one to thank, you know, all the.
Oh, for sure.
All the voters.
Yep. But, uh, well, thank you for presenting it to them as such. Um, I've been in positions where I presented budget as budgets before and they, uh, before they go to the voters to, uh, for relief.
Well, now and then.
Yeah, so, my, my thanks. Um, the last page. On that packet. There's a breakdown of the fifty thousand dollars that was allocated from the, um, safety vehicle fund for equipment. And the last two on the bottom of the table, change orders that came from the factory during the production of the truck. Um, bottom rate total, I did over expend over the fifty thousand you guys offered, uh, to three hundred and seventy-three dollars. Um, my apologies on that, unfortunately, um, can't control everything that was. Um, with that said, I would like permission to keep that there and not have to pull that back from my budget money. And on top of that, I would like, the truck is actually back at New Hampshire, the dealership right now. They had to make some changes on some piping in it. That it came from the factory just a little bit wonky, so they wanted to change that for us. As well, while they're there, I have them, they quoted, there's some more work to the truck. Stuff that we missed in the, um, production of it, uh, on our end specifying that's what we wanted. Um, two, the inner two items are making sure that we can prime draft that truck from all, from the two exterior spots without having to shut down, moving water out of it. So it makes it so we can actually start the truck fighting a fire. Actually draft in water from a ported tank, a pond or something like that, be able to not interrupt that flow leaving the pump. Uh, the way we'd have to do it, of course, we'd have to siphon the air or pull the air out of the.
Piggybacking.
We have to pull air out of that tube. If we don't pull the air out of that tube and open up that valve to let water start coming out, you'll put air in the pump and the pump will stop pumping the water, so.
Cavitated.
Yes, so that we missed, there's something we started with the, the new truck, the, the big one. Make sure that we can prime all of our exterior, um, valve or exterior ports for suction without having to induce air into that pump that possibly cavitated. Uh, something we missed on that one when we were building it out, as well as a pump house heater, so a little heater inside of the pump area itself. So when it's just sitting out in the cold, if it's really cold, it helps make sure that pump, that plumbing is not freezing up. It will circulate the pump on scene of wherever we are when it's cold out, but there's parts inside there. The primer motor and stuff like that will have water in that, you can't actually circulate that. If it's cold enough, we've had them freeze before, it just, it takes that truck out of being able to do certain things. Um, they quoted me around fifty-five hundred dollars to do that work. So what I would like to do is if, if the board so chooses to be able to cover the three hundred and seventy-three that are over expended on the fifty thousand dollars originally allocated, as well as another fifty-five hundred. So I would like the board's permission to use up to six thousand dollars over the overage as well as the work that they're doing this, this week on the truck.
You want the three seventy-three from out of the board pocket, not your fire department?
Out of the safety fund. The safety equipment.
Equipment safety fund.
Yep.
You want us to take the three hundred and seventy-three, not out of the equipment safety fund, out of our budget from someplace else?
No, we'll take that, the three seventy-three plus the fifty-five hundred rounded to six thousand from the fire truck fund.
Oh, okay, I got you.
I just needed your permission to be able to use the money from.
To change the lines, to take it out of a different line of.
But to take it, so instead of paying it for my fire department budget from the safety fund itself. I just, I need your guidance, wasn't be able to spend that one.
By the new truck fund.
Yes, yep.
Okay. How do you feel about that, Alan?
All their money. And how needs it. I have a question, what is plastic litter for twelve hundred dollars?
That's the, um, Stokes basket, goes up on top of the side there. Um, we put the Stokes, or the Stokes basket carries somebody out of the woods, over the hill or something like that. Put a person on the backboard, put them inside of that and then you have handholds for everybody to slide it on the ground this athlete. That, uh, is where we, the big wheel kit, if you saw it on the back of our side-by-side, just strap that single big wheel through it and guys can actually walk it out of the woods instead of having to carry it, so.
They just launched that six thousand out of a different line item in his budget. He's asking.
It's not in his budget.
You know, it's not the.
Or the equipment replacement line.
Yes.
Just to wring it out.
You okay with that, Mark?
Yeah, as long as we're already, have the money in the budget.
And that isn't.
Yes, Mark.
You okay with that, Carol? Alan? Consensus of the board is yes.
Hopefully then the truck is done.
Yeah, so we were planning on this, this Tuesday to have it in service. Um, it went Wednesday morning right after town meeting. I, they wanted it the week before, I said, I've, it's already here. If we have to push it out one week, so it could be available for the board and the taxpayers to see it in the firehouse. So I pushed them off to this week, uh, or so, Wednesday of last week. It was done Friday, uh, minus the additional stuff I asked them to do. So I'm, they're hoping they haven't done it this week. So we're hoping. Next week to have that truck in service. With that, the old truck. Would like to know what the board feels, they would like to do with that. Um, we, of course, would like to sell it to try and recoup as much money from, to, back to the truck, the emergency truck fund. Put some of this six thousand dollars back or a lot more, hopefully.
What do you think it's worth?
The salesman said we should get no less than a hundred. With the amount of equipment at a hundred thousand dollars. I do not see anywhere online where a truck of that age, uh, is going for more than. Thirty-five, forty. I would like to list it for. At least sixty-five. I consult with people that sell them every day and just make sure, but I would like to sell it for in excess of fifty thousand at the very least if it's possible. Um, we do have a bit of equipment that is staying on it, um, that is going because of age and we've switched, um. So the biggest thing is the hose lines, to search the better attack line as well as a different supply line, it's a different size supply line. So all of that goes with the truck as well as, uh, some nozzles and miscellaneous hand tool stuff. Um, so there is value in that, uh, depending on the price, the old extrication tools might go with it as well. Um, so.
Alan, you ever want to sell it, Alan?
What year is that truck, Alan?
Eric, Karen? Ninety-three.
All right. You okay with selling it?
Still, but I'd like to get like seventy-five. Uh, not mine.
Another, a company we used, we had another truck we tried to sell, I'd like to re, I'm gonna reach out to them if that's possible, if that's okay. Any idea from them what we should list it at? Um, and if it's all right with the board, with their advice, I would like to, you'll put it on the market.
You okay with that? Selling it?
You get a good price.
Now, consensus of the board is yes.
And I think you'll have the authority to make the sale, I just was looking for your blessing to.
Yes.
So there's no locals, comments that need, that.
None have. None have written any letters as such to say they would like a, a, uh.
Nineteen ninety-three.
A, a help out.
I mean, I don't know.
That one has twenty-six, twenty, twenty-something, I forget exactly what it is.
Yes. Maybe, my turn.
If they, if the board so, if someone finds an apartment, wrote a letter that was nice enough to ask for help on it, I, I would present it to you, so. But no one has officially said they would really like to help with that, so.
Okay.
Um, so what are you saying, like, do you think some other companies would like to pay for the truck or don't, or for us to donate on the truck?
I'm sure they would love a donation, but I would ask that the board.
Board wants to sell it.
I wanted to be clear what was being said about that.
If, if this board was so moved. It's, it is the town, as you stated, it is the town of Fulton's truck.
That's the taxpayers of Fulton's truck.
It's, uh, we're so blessed to have it, have it all these years.
They're gonna get rid of it, we'll sell it and try and recoup some money for the tax.
Um, another thing, the repeaters, Alan Glenn is working with the electricians, I'm not sure if you guys have been brought in too much. Bulls in place, towers almost ready to be switched over. Still waiting on licensing for the fire department's repeaters. Um, I've been after the company, they've already changed FCC licensing people to try and get it done. Now, um, hasn't come through yet, still hounding on there. So after we get that, the biggest thing we're waiting for that is we need the, what frequency range they're in so we can buy the appropriate, um. Antenna to go with that, if we just go buy any random antenna, if it's not to the right frequency, it's not gonna work. So we need the, we need the FCC to say what numbers are, are frequencies to divide it. Uh, the fire department, or not fire, the highway department's stuff is all set up, or they have their licenses and antenna is in place. Uh, we do have the two enclosures to go up with the new power. Place to be able to put the repeaters in. Just been trying to beat the radio guys up to get us that antenna so we can put all of it up at once. Uh, Greenmount Power has been very gracious, but they're going to help us out and make sure those pole, or those antennas get up. Uh, get up and get mounted, um, it sounds like as long as we all play nice, like we, we try to do every day we can. Um, they'll play nice with us, so.
That's.
Well, I have to leave for tonight.
All right. Any questions for?
Yes, some people are asking about what they can do to be recruited, to be on the, and I said to see you, but is there something, some way that you get that out there that I'm missing that?
We put, first we put it in every blurb we send out, it's on Facebook and all that. One thing I do need to do, um, forget it, is to get applications down here, the town office. So people could come here and actually get an application and they'll try to catch us on a Tuesday night. Um, I have a few applications sprayed in my binder and we have some in the truck all the time. So if anyone sees the trucks out in the belt, they want an application, stop whoever's, goes around an emergency incident and there's stuff going on. Or if you wanna, you know, if you know what you're, um, yeah, lay this down on Tuesday, Tuesday night.
We can go out to up there on Tuesday night.
That's, that's up there.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Aaron.
No, Aaron, as long as you're here.
Yep.
I happened to be walking by toads the, the other day, can I notice the beast out there from that exhaust pipe?
Yep.
It is dripping with grease.
Yep.
Is, is that a fire hazard?
Yes.
It is just dripping, it's dripping down the building and it's just loaded. With litified grease.
I can, uh, reach out to the.
Slamming on the ground?
Fire, the fire marshal of the area.
And the whole area is underneath it. That's ruined, old Latin food. It looks like a, uh, nasty scene.
Is it on this side?
Yeah, you're right.
I don't walk that way very often.
Right, right, no, I don't eat the spot, I saw it. And there's pots and pans on the ground, grease, it just looks like shit.
Like, like shiitake and grease and the pots and pans.
It is dripping.
Only other thing I forgot to talk on. At the town meeting night, I was, uh, informed, and I think I, I keep forgetting and I will have it to you for the next meeting, is an inventory of our trucks that we have.
Yeah.
What they do and what their current status is.
Yeah, where they are in the progression.
Yep.
Yeah.
All the way through.
That would be good for now.
For the next meeting, um, or if the board so choose, I will make sure I'm here for the second Monday in April and I can present it then if that.
That'd be good.
Okay.
That'd be good, that.
Problem why it's so hard for me to get in and out of here, if I miss the second, our officers meeting where all the officers get together and we discuss everything for the last month and went out. It's always the last Monday of the month, so when it's the fourth Monday, if I miss the second, I, my apologies, that's why we are not here, as I was saying I'd like to do, so. Thank you all.
Thank you, Aaron. Take care.
All right, now. Brooklyn Regional Planning Commission?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report, public comments and concerns? Yes, ma'am.
I. I was at the information meeting physically, but I wasn't there mentally, so I, I do have questions and I missed that question. Um, so I have a couple of things. Um, I want to thank Paul first for adding the percent change column to the annual report because that made. My calculations a lot easier, so much appreciated. On the auditing budget, can you explain the twenty-one percent increase in salaries? I have the.
On the audit, you're saying?
Yeah, whatever. Salaries went from nine thousand five hundred to eleven thousand five hundred a week. Your percent change shows twenty-one percent. It's page twenty-one outside.
So you're talking about my budget?
It's your budget, yes.
All right, what page is that?
Twenty-one.
Oh, you're, you're not seeing, you're saying twenty-one percent, please? The wrong book.
What, mine?
Nothing.
What, mine?
No, I got it right here. Oh, the, for the audit, you mean?
Yeah, auditing is.
Oh, oh, auditing.
Yes. Eleven five.
Does the audit, the audit went up? The cost of our auditing is going up.
Okay.
Um, we've actually, Nish and I have actually informally gotten several quotes of different auditions. Um. Different, um, CPAs that do auditing services for municipalities and. You wouldn't like the other numbers, put it that way.
So the auditing went from nine thousand five hundred to eleven thousand five hundred, that's the cost.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a huge dollar amount, but which is that?
No, but you want to know, that's fine.
Yeah, okay. For page twenty-two. Can you just give, I, I guess, no, it's just the town website, can you just give us a status of what's going on with the town website?
Sure, so, um, uh, Sarah's a little bit more familiar with it because she's dealing with the. We signed a new contract for, to, for a new website. They, the company has been building out the new website. They're, we're trying to figure out how to, um, migrate whatever, whatever information from our current website to the new website, how to coordinate that as efficiently as possible. Um. I don't know the projected date for it to be, uh, up and running.
We're also trying to see about training, like, who can use it, what we have to do, what areas are going to be on it for the website.
But it's moving along, that's good.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, that's gonna be nice to see. Um, again, police contract services on page twenty-two, one percent increase.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
They charge.
Yep.
Okay, um.
That's not, yeah, that's the same coverage. I would wish it would be more, more coverage hours, but it's the same coverage for my money.
Yeah.
But he did tell us, I think we said that during a meeting back a while ago, that that was going to increase.
Okay, um, page twenty-three, under solid waste. Um. Need to refresh my notes here. Oh, can you, can you explain the change in the station operator budget line?
Uh, the board is, um. The, the plan is to make that a full-time position. Um, currently, the highway department does a lot of the stuff up there and. Um, currently, the highway department does a lot of the stuff up there and we're trying to. The plan is to make it a full-time position so that, that they rely less on the highway department and more on themselves.
So that would be, even though the, the hours for the transfer station open to the public won't change?
Correct.
They're working behind.
The person up there would work probably one more day. We have to discuss it.
A lot of stuff has to be done outside.
Yeah. But no, the hours will not change.
Hours won't change.
The hours that they're open will not change.
Okay.
Uh, won't increase.
Also, um. I thought this was kinda weird. The supervisor line.
What page?
I'm sorry, well, the supervisor line was actually in fiscal year June thirty, twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
It disappeared.
Oh, we made that station operator. That's the full-time decision.
Yeah, we.
Oh, all right, so that, but is that?
That was my fault. Um, it, it created a lot of confusion. Uh, internally on what line, what, you know, what salaries were coming from what line. It was my fault. Um, so I, we made it this way to make it a little clearer that. We have three operators. The station operator is essentially the supervisor.
Okay, gotcha.
Uh, the assistant is the, the gen- the position that's there more often than the other position. Which is only there one day a week.
Now, I know we currently do have supervisor up there. Is he in to move on this?
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
Yes.
Oh. Also, equipment rental line disappeared. In the twenty-three, twenty-four. Oh, it didn't?
No, it didn't.
I'm, I'm mistaken. I'm mistaken.
Okay, who knows?
Twenty-three, twenty-four budget, okay, okay. And also, on page twenty-six.
Twenty-six, did you say, Mary?
Yeah, twenty-six.
I'm there.
Uh, under vehicles and equipment.
Mm-hmm.
This is highway department.
Yep.
Um, the last line, tires.
Yep.
You have almost thirty-seven thousand dollar expenditure. Can you explain?
Uh, yeah, we've been, we. Well, historically, they've been under budgeting for tires. Uh, that, that year, the thirty-seven thousand dollar year was, was, uh.
You did read it.
The, the, um. Highway department. Went through their inventory and determined. A, we're running bad tires on some of this equipment. We're close to bad tires on some of this equipment. And B, we'd like to have some in our inventory so that. If, if the need arises, we have the tires. So we did expend. Uh, a goo- good amount of money with the anticipation of that that's gonna keep us covered for a couple of years. And you'll notice we also increased. Uh, the tire budget by a hundred percent. Um, so the hope is that we, we. We're trying to get out of the run it till it's, can't be run anymore mentality that's been.
Be proactive.
That's what happened, gentlemen. It happened that we were out of tire and we had to wait and go get one and find one or something.
Well, did some of that thirty thousand come from a grant?
No.
Until the greater tire request, okay?
The greater tires are over three thousand dollars a piece and there's six tire, I'm just a greater. Lower tires are, are the exact same size tire, it's the exact same price and there's more on the. Uh, backhoe, just as expensive. Front tires for the backhoe is about just as expensive, even though they're much smaller because they're also loaded. Provide balance to the machine so that you don't flip the machine later on the roadside working.
Yeah.
Um. You could not take the grader out in a snowstorm. Prior to chasing a sand truck, sanding it about a hundred percent. Without chains to these new tires. Um. It, it's a machine that should be able to go out on the roads at any point, blockbusters, storm, any sort of ice event. Or whatever, without having to say. We have to put chains on this before we can even think about getting it out there.
And just one more question with, um, when you put tires in inventory, I know. Looking at motorcycle tires, you, you do get dry rot, you get cracks on the side. Are you going to have that issue if. These tires are, are sitting in one of the garages?
No, and I don't have any sort of a stockpile by any means at all.
Oh, I thought you did. I thought you had some.
I have a couple, but I'm, I'm saying I don't have. I don't have a, I have enough to get us through. A pinch, basically.
Okay.
Um, not. To do multiple trucks at the same time. It's, it's enough to, you know. Something happens at four in the morning or whatever, we can bring a tire out or bring the truck back and swap the tire, whether it's a steer tire, which is a different size from rear tires. So, pretty, and, and multiple, even though the trucks look the same size-wise. Um, there's also different sizes. Steer tires are, are different, even though half the time they don't, when the truck's coming at you down the road, they don't look different. They are different. Um. And, and I'm making sure that we get good crosscut tread on these tires, that they're designed for going out in crap weather.
We were at a very low point with tires on our entire fleet. So the thirty-six thousand took care of that. And now we're, we've increased, like Paul said, it went up. You know, from four thousand to eight thousand, well. Once you get to that level and get everything.
Oh, you might as well.
You gotta stay proactive.
Yes.
So that you don't get caught again.
Right, you don't have thirty-six.
Right, again. And it was bad and the board doesn't realize it because we don't see it.
It's really hard to, hard to make the change, cause I mean, it's really hard to make the change, um, from. From, from needing it, from not having it, needing it for so many. Pieces of equipment. To, to getting there, but once you get there, you can, you can really stay on top of it and you shouldn't see.
So you're not in that pickle.
Hopefully ever see thirty thousand something dollars for tires ever again. It's a hard pill to swallow, but. It, it got us in a. I feel much more confident sending the guys out in an ice storm with the tires around the trucks now.
Huh? It's a safety issue too.
Oh, very much.
Absolutely.
Jonathan, you had your hand raised.
I was just gonna ask you, Joel, do you feel like that sorted? Are you happy with where you're at, with the level and then with the budget being where, like. Being able to do the thing the way that you think it should be done, at the pace that you think it should be done. Did we get to level and are we now keeping up and staying slightly ahead?
Ask me in another couple of years when I really get this. Lock it down.
I think we will see thirty thousand dollar tires again with completion being where you spoke, and that's twenty-three years.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, Jonathan, that eight thousand, if we don't use. All of it, it stays in the budget and it rolls over, we don't take it out of that line.
And my comment is less to the planning and more to just the increasing prices, nature of prices, like, you know. It's just.
Yeah.
The nature of things, but thanks for keeping an eye on me.
Anything else?
Yeah, when you, when you just said it stays in the budget if it's not spent.
Mm-hmm.
I thought this was the operating budget.
It is.
And I thought.
But if you have twenty bucks left over, leave it there.
Hmm.
You do? See, I thought you'd need a capital fund to. Similar to what the fire department does. It's a capital fund.
Well, I mean, for instance, uh. You know, some, a lot, sometimes when you're close, close to your budget, there is, uh, an amount of Robin Peter to pay Paul.
Right, right, you have some light items to switch you around.
But the, the, the one, the one that is more like capital is the equipment replacement fund. Where, where it's a, fire department has a separate line in the budget for that. That's how that we treat that line in this highway department. That, that goes into. A separate fund and hopefully, when you need a truck, you have the money to buy the truck.
Mm-hmm, right. But Mary Sue, at the end of the year. When we get done, like August, September, we have our final numbers. You know, I say it just stays in there. I've been on this board almost eighteen years and we just, we break even. You're plus or minus two percent in our budgeting and it's been that way for eighteen years, which. As you know with numbers, when you budget plus or minus two percent, on any budget. With unknown, unknowns, that's a fantastic budget. That's good budgeting. And that's what we end up with every year, don't we? We don't end up with a big surplus of the year. We don't have to parlay with any surplus.
No, what's nice is you do get the expended, but you, there's, there's time lag.
Right.
On what's actually been expended.
Exactly, yes.
So, and I do have, I'm done with my budget questions, but I do have another question for Joe. Um. On the, on East Polkman Green. Um. I was watching a small river go through my neighbor, my friend Jane Williams' yard. So I know you're aware of the situation. Do you know, do you have a timeframe as to when that's going to be, be looked at?
I actually have and, uh, we, we've engaged an engineer firm to design. Uh, a system there. That we, we hope to have installed this spring. Um. Likewise, there is, there is a, as part of the bridge. Um, replacement. There's some other, the other property on the south. West corner of the bridge, we've designed something for that location as well.
Yeah, we were just talking about that today.
Great, thank you.
So, we're hoping to have that.
It's in your work.
We're hoping to engage a company to do that for us. But, uh, the last I spoke with the engineer, he had. He had yet to, um, finalize the design on the Jane Williams property. Yes.
Um, again, I have a few things. Um, I would love to volunteer again to help clean up on Fourth of July. That was really fun.
Do you know this?
Yeah, well, it was. Cleaning up, do you know? And if, if we had this company for years and years and years, that would be Fourth of July, and now they keep booking. Themselves so that we can't use them. Can we book them for twenty twenty-five now? And maybe twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
Here's the issue, um. And I said this to Sarah, help me this morning, like. You know, in my mind, maybe, maybe it's a, um. Maybe it's just me, cause my wife says it's me. Um, like, in my mind, if it's March, but. What, what do you mean? You can't, you already booked for July. But apparently, it's my mind.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the que- the answer to the question is yes. You could say, okay, right, let's book right now. Uh, cause they actually sent me stuff in November and of course, right in the middle of budget season. It's sort of just, in my mind, just, I'm back and wait until we're done with budget season, but obviously I waited too long.
Should we tell you how they interact? Like, how we, you know.
It's not for my mental health, that's what you want.
Oh, there's one. Um, and then I guess the last one is. Uh, sidewalks.
What page, what page?
Twenty-six. Yeah, zero, one. Only because I was crossing over the bridge and he's pulled me and I couldn't help but notice is that new beautiful, beautiful. Crossing for pedestrians.
Mm-hmm.
And I thought you guys would get mad at me if I pour it down and put it up on the street.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then it wasn't me.
Oh, it wasn't you.
Not me.
Uh, so the question is, what, how can we open budget for sidewalks?
And can we next year and how do we go about doing that? And back to my question about a safety. Uh, crossing for, uh, York Street.
See, that's not ours.
Yeah, I know it's the village, um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got a big.
The, the village, the village was, um. The village board has, has. Discuss using, seeking some funding a- and or using some of their budgeted sidewalk money. To develop a plan. We did meet with, um. One of the transportation folks from Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Specifically about that. Lack of sidewalk on the west side of Church Street. Uh, as it approaches, um, Deepo Street. And we kind of quickly realized it was. W- we think it's gonna be better to engage an engineering company to design. The solution there because of the proximity of. The old firehouse, um, and the fact that on the other side of Church Street, we know most people park. Worry, potentially for a sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Use another spot or two like that, engineering. So this is for the opposite of Church Street and Third.
Yeah, Bentley too.
Yeah, and Bentley.
Cause you got all the telephone poles on that.
Yeah, Bentley's a big one, but, um. Church especially, just, just that part, cause it's so many kids walking to get to the elementary school and just, and, yeah, you guys all. So, I just, I'm gonna just keep asking.
That's fine.
The town, what is zero to do? It's just so nice to take care of the town.
Town has one sidewalk.
Yes. Town has one sidewalk. The sidewalk is that.
Corner of East Polkman.
Where the beautiful crossing thing is?
That's one sidewalk the town has, all the rest of the village.
Well, it's gorgeous, one by yours. Thank you, Dan.
Okay, sure. Okay, any other comments and concerns, questions? Anybody on Zoom that has any? Yes, Jonathan?
Thank you for backing up the ambulance service, getting the funding that they required.
That wasn't us, that was, we put that on the ballot.
That's what, no, that, but that.
The voters that did that.
I like the way that you kick it back to the people that you serve, I respect, but also, don't have a choice. And you made the choice that preserved our single option and I'll reiterate. My suggestion that we. Look at what we can do as accounts to assist. Um, at a, at a minimum with the communication and perhaps the gathering of such things. So that they don't find themselves in such a defensive posture, and it seems like, based on everything I've seen. They're trying their best and they're just working with limited resources relative to their needs. So I just wanted to put it out there, but thanks for making sure that it moved over to the hospital.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Anything else? All right, Matt Port, do I hear a motion to, uh, sign the board orders?
Make a motion to sign the board orders.
Do I hear a second?
I'm sick.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? We need to go into executive session tonight, so. Yeah, that, not hearing that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Executive session?
What?
We're not gonna have any chat, no? All right.
It's supposed to do with, uh. Nisha.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Geez. I have to keep doing.
I'm dealing with this, like we discussed.
I think we have a plan for this.
Right. Are we adjourning now?
We should go in on personnel matter.
What?
Very short.
I think we should.
Okay.
And well, we pass the, the, the. Oh.
The others. We.
We need to make a motion, we're going to executive session.
Motion.
Oh, he asked for reading that.
Oh. Pass it.
Thank you.
We do it?
Yeah.
Good night.
Make a motion to enter executive session to discuss personnel matters.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I'll pass you.[1787.36]